I'm sure they'll give you time to read it.
Why don't we go ahead and call our council meeting to order? It's 6:01. The appointed hour is upon us. If I could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, and then we'll ask Ms. Sains. Will you send the blades to the flag?
Certainly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call the round?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Mrs. Conway.
Here.
Mrs. Erdley.
Here.
Mr. Lesby. Mr. Showalter.
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sains.
Here.
Mrs. Tackett.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
We have one.
Okay.
Great. Each of you have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting, February 23rd. If you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion for approval, Mayor.
Thank you. A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And if there are no changes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, David. In your packet, you also have a copy of the check register. If everybody could indicate that they've received that check register.
Yes.
Thank you. Public comments. First on our list is Mr. Ron Bryant with the 4th July funding request.
Well.
Maybe Mr. Bryant will be here later. He signed up. Now, he couldn't have gone far. Okay. Asidra Roka? Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Maggie McGuire. I'm the business manager for Saints Francis and John Catholic Parish. I'm here today to talk about, we wanted to do a live Stations of the Cross procession on Good Friday. We'd like to start from the courthouse, and then from there, go across the street, and essentially use the sidewalk all the way from Broadway, Maine to St. John's. Along the way, we will be stopping at 14 different areas, or actually 13, since the first one would be starting at the courthouse, and stopping at 13 areas where that represent the remaining 13 Stations of the Cross. And this is my first time here, so I'm not sure what else to do other than tell you that that's what our plans are.
Maggie, then, you're going to march entirely on the sidewalks? Is that correct?
Correct.
So, we're not having to close the streets?
Correct. The only thing we need to do is cross the street from the courthouse to the other side.
Right. I think this would be a very easy approval.
I think so, too.
For the council to grant.
Make a motion to approve it.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, Ms. Sains.
Mayor, we might want to ask just for an officer to be here to get them across the streets because the light might not change. It'd change quicker than they're going to get across, okay?
Yes, and also, we don't know, this is our first time doing it. We don't know if we're going to have five people, 10 people, 50 people, 100 people. And our hope is, in future years, is to invite other churches in the Georgetown area to participate as well.
Well, it sounds like a great way to start.
Yeah.
And with some police assistance to make sure that you all get that done. Well, if there are any further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Susan, would you like to speak as well? Or that covered your issue also?
She's covered.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? That's all we had signed up. Thank you. Mayor's comments. Just a couple of brief comments. One change that we wanted the council to be aware of. We're still sending you your packets electronically. But in the interest of full transparency to the public, we've made a practice, we've changed a practice that we've held here in City Hall. And what we're doing, at the same time that you all get your packets electronically, we are posting the packet on the city's website. And in that manner, everybody has access to the packet at the same time the city council has access to the packet. So, we'll also do a Facebook posting with a link to the packet as well. And just thought that was another way that we could engage our citizens better and let them have the same information that we're having. Dan called me this morning and was questioning about the council meeting, and I had not, with this new practice we have in City Hall, we didn't email a packet to anyone except the council. But we want to make sure that people realize that their packets are now available on the website and through a Facebook notification. Also, I wanted to thank the council for attending the State of the City address today. I'm not sure that, I don't know when the council's had all eight council members in attendance. And it seems to me that everything this council's done, you've done as a group of eight. And it's just been remarkable to me that the level of commitment of the council, and appreciate you all being there today. We've talked about it too much, and we talked about it today. I just want to note that I do believe that you all seem did considerably better with Snowstorm 2 than we did with Snowstorm 1. Snowstorm 1, it was mentioned to me, could Snowstorm 1 have almost been a dress rehearsal? Well, it was a real tough dress rehearsal, but it actually did have that effect. And we were able to respond better with Snowstorm 2. So, I want to thank the council for the feedback that you all gave us and the help with that process. Also, want the council to know that your City Hall staff is in the process of sending out a request for qualifications for insurance services. We haven't done this process for three years. We think it's appropriate to do an RFQ process. At this stage, it would be for workers' compensation, property, and casualty. And what this RFQ process would be designed to do is to hire an agent that would then represent the city. This step tonight is not actually reviewing proposals. This is simply letting you know that we're going to begin this RFQ process. And we'll have a selection committee. I would anticipate that some council members will be on that selection committee. It was also our intention that, while it's premature to do this for health insurance right now, we do anticipate doing the same process for health insurance in July. Insurance is one of the greatest cost drivers in our budget, and it's very, very complex. And I just, I want us to assemble the best possible team that we can assemble to help us with our insurance deliberations. So, the RFQ, going out with the RFQ does not require your vote. Certainly, certainly when we bring those recommendations back to you, that will require council vote. And wanted you all to know that we've begun that process. If I could stop for just a minute under my comments, and I believe Mr. Bryant is here.
Very much, my prester. Members of the city council, thank you for hearing me again tonight. As you know, in the past years, I've come before you asking if the city of Georgetown could help out with the 4th of July fireworks, which has become one of our most famous things here for this community. We have always had very, very wonderful comments about what goes on there. And again, last year, it was estimated that over 14,000 people actually watched those fireworks. And from a historical perspective, I think this year would be very, very wonderful because this is the 150th anniversary of the end of the war between the states. And how appropriate to celebrate the reunification of the nation with the 4th of July, which is a very wonderful event that did unite all people. So, if the city of Georgetown could be of help to us this time as the, as president of the Arts Council and the Cultural and Heritage Association, we would be most appreciative. And you all have helped us in the past in the sum of some $5,000. And if you could do it again, we would be very, very grateful for it.
Mr. Bryant, we appreciate your bringing the request before the council. We are not at the point in our budget preparation. This would be 2015 expenditure, I assume. But it is certainly our intent to get that written into our budget. And hopefully, the council will look favorably upon that.
I would appreciate it very much, folks. And we always appreciate it.
Any questions for Mr. Bryant?
While I'm standing here. You want a quick history lesson or anything like that? I didn't think you would. You can proceed on with your business. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next items on your agenda are styled under City Attorney. I'm probably going to talk more on those than Andrew wants me to. But we are, we do have a municipal order tonight approving items for a surplus sale. We've been anticipating this surplus sale for some time. Department heads have been getting us the right information. And we're going to, the interesting thing about this one, it will be an all-online auction. Chipotle has that capacity, and indications are that we actually get higher bids from an online setting than we do in a live bid setting. So, it's, it's a little easier logistically, and we realize more money, so. Tracy?
An order declaring surplus property and authorizing the disposal of same by public auction. Whereas the property described in the list attached here, too, and incorporated herein by reference, was acquired for use by the designated city departments. And whereas the property is in need of repairs exceeding its current value, is not being used by the city and should be declared surplus. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the property described in the attached list is declared surplus property, and that the mayor is authorized to dispose of the same by public auction.
Now, do we need to have you read all of those, a list of serial numbers of counters and numberers in there?
Just say it. Every single one.
Can we characterize those generally?
Yeah, I think, I'll speak to the IT part, and other directors can speak to what's in. But we've been amassing some old computer equipment, old printers. A lot of the things don't work, or don't work well, or out of date. They've been piling up downstairs. It needed to be surplus forever. There's a lot of things that you can't really categorize. There's probably 100 power cables down there. We're just going to try to lump those in and sell what we can. Maybe think about if we can't sell it, if we can donate it to a good cause, or whatever. But there's just a lot of stuff that needs to be cleaned out down there. None of it, none of it is, has any active possible value to the city.
You just told the bidder out there, half of it didn't work.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. That really, hey, Tom, that's really going to inflate that online stuff right there.
Truth in advertising. We're all about transparency, Mike.
And it's hard to tell what works and doesn't work, so it's, you know.
You really don't have a way of doing, I mean, I guess you could hook up each individual piece, but.
Are there other departmental?
I attached a list from each department. I don't believe Joe may want to speak. P&amp;Z had a bunch of computer stuff as well.
That's really making this a whopping outfit.
There are some vehicles. They're not at used car sales, and I'm just telling you.
It's just like brand new, what you're supposed to say.
That's right. There are vehicles involved in this from cemetery.
Cemetery. And PD.
It's the routine things that we normally declare surplus there. No further value to the city.
Oh, heavens.
We sometimes, when we have a request from one of our sister cities, sister cities in Scott County, or another community, we do have the legal ability to transfer items to another unit of government. But these things are marginal value, and we'd like to have the online auction. Motion. Motion's been made.
Second.
Second. Ms. Erdley? And if there are no, if there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I will call on Andrew to help explain the very long legal document that we've only presented you with tonight. And I'd like to say upfront that we would have typically, on an issue of this complexity, we want you to have the information well before the council meeting. As you all may have heard me comment during the State of the City address today, we were actively negotiating this franchise agreement through four different phone calls yesterday and conference calls early this morning. So, this literally just got completed to the point where we could bring it to you tonight. We still have a deadline of when this has to be done by, and it's before our next council meeting. So, even though we're bringing this to you late in terms of the final document, we are going to ask you for action tonight. And we want to take as long as we need to, to talk through what the content of the document is to get you, hopefully, to a comfort level where you're willing to take that vote tonight. I think as we approached our cable franchise extension and our role in this merger process, as I've explained to the council before, Georgetown is expected to approve, approve or deny this merger that's going on between Time Warner and Comcast. What our experiences will be is today, we're with Time Warner. When the merger's complete, we'll be with Comcast for a short period of time. And then, very quickly, the Charter customers, 3.5 million Charter customers, are going to be spun off from that main merger. And we are in those 3.5 million customers. So, the majority of our negotiations and discussions have been with Charter, who will be our ultimate carrier. We have focused on four primary areas as we've done these negotiations. We thought the most critical point of this entire document is the line extension policy. We've all talked at length about line extension policy and how our current Time Warner line extension policy is overly complex, hard to understand, and hard to apply. We've all heard horror stories about our neighbors that live in newly developing subdivisions that have trouble getting cable access and therefore, high-speed internet access. And we want, our goal has been to get those folks some relief. We wanted a line extension policy that is both more favorable to our citizens and easier to understand. And I believe that we've accomplished that when we go through the steps of this line extension policy for you to consider. Number two, we've all been worried about the service that our citizens have received. And it has not been acceptable. It's not been okay, the way some of our citizens have been, have been treated. We've also heard too many stories about citizens asking for cable and internet access to their home, only to be told that Time Warner would be glad to provide that service as soon as the customer deposits $10,000 for the capital costs that it takes to get service to their lot. That's unacceptable in a city that's growing as quickly as Georgetown is. So, we tried to get at that issue as well. I've also insisted on having some conversations with some of the executive management of Charter to learn about what their corporate intent is about improving their service and the way they're going to do their business post-merger. Charter has a new CEO that is very customer service oriented and very aggressive in those terms. I've worked with, we've worked with three different, four different representatives from Charter. And what we've spent a great deal of our time talking about is that we don't simply want a cable provider in Georgetown. What we want is a corporate partner in Georgetown that can help us with cable delivery. We expect outstanding service from this. I've received those assurances. It seems like folks have a corporate intent to deliver this type of service. And given the nature of the conversations we've had with them, I believe that will be the case. And what I mentioned today is, is we wanted to achieve two different types of transparency with this transaction. The first type of transparency is that our line extension policy be straightforward, understandable, and not confusing. So that we can go to a map, our citizens can go to a map and tell exactly where a cable service exists. We think that a line extension policy that is transparent in and of itself is the first step in this transaction. What you'll hear, some of the details that you'll hear from Andrew are these old problems of delays in getting service, or an outrageous cost being quoted to get service, are going to be a thing of the past once we go into this agreement. We've been so proactive in the way we've approached new development. We've been talking a lot about new development with stormwater and now cable access. We're going to have, this franchise agreement will require Charter, at the time that a final plat is approved by planning and zoning, there have to be arrangements for that cable to go into a ditch like every other utility. So, going forward, new developments will have this service, and there won't be any of these $10,000 surprises for people. That's a real strong component of this. It's something that Charter is very proud of, that they're willing to work with communities in a real forward-thinking way of that type. The other thing that we've been able to achieve in these negotiations is a grant to help us replace the broadcast cameras and the broadcast console for City Hall. We've all watched recorded versions of this, of our council meetings. And each of you have received comments. It does us little good that one of those cameras is broken and points directly at the ceiling. That makes the airtime for this side of the council bench a little lacking at times. Our cameras are analog. They're not of the quality they should be. So, what we've made arrangements for is, we believe, an amount great enough to purchase four new high-definition cameras, along with their mounting requirements and the motors that let them tilt and pan. A new broadcast console that will give us a lot better flexibility from back in the booth to give a better viewing quality to our citizens. We will have the ability, between this upgrade and the bandwidth upgrade that we're getting ready to bring live, we will finally have the ability to do live streaming of council meetings. So, if somebody doesn't have cable, they can live stream us on a laptop. If they live in the county, they can live stream us. It just, it's another step in our use of technology that's appropriate. And I just, what I talked, what we talked to Charter about was transparency with the line extension plan, and to help this council with transparency in our broadcast activities. And this, these were fascinating negotiations. What I can tell you is, the council's willingness to take a firm position gave us the foundation that we needed to have these conversations. The fact that you all supported us in taking a very firm position allowed us to make the progress that we've made. I'm frankly, other than having to bring you a complex document and ask you to approve it the first time you see it, I'm pleased with this outcome. And but for the extension, but for the deadline that we have, I would like to give the council more time to consider the formal document. But Andrew, it may be helpful if you could lead the council through exactly what the line extension policy is.
Yeah.
And where we've simplified it beyond where other cities might be able to.
Yeah. Well, the current line extension policy that we've had for decades now says that when, it sets up a 30-house-per-mile density requirement. That's, that's layer one. And it's, it's not real clear what, you know, from what point you're measuring, how you measure. And then, it actually says, not only this must be a 30-household density, but 30 people within that one mile actually have requested service. So, there could be 50 houses eligible to receive cable. But if all 30 of those folks don't request it, then it doesn't meet that area requirement. And then, they say that houses that currently subscribe to satellite only get counted as one-fourth of a house. So, it's just a very poor line extension policy. I'm actually surprised that we've gotten the coverage that we have with such a terrible line extension policy. So, the new standard sets up a 20-house-per-cable-mile policy, measured from the nearest access point, and they're required to give us a map of all access points. We can request a new map at any time. There's no request requirement. For all houses, for all residential units, they call it residential households, existing at the time that we sign the franchise, that meet that density requirement, they will all get service built in within six months. And there's a list of what those neighborhoods are in your resolution. It's.
Items listed.
Clear. Rocky Creek Reserve, McClellan Springs, McClellan View, Colony, the Abbey at Old Oxford, also Ford Hall, Rocky Creek, and Pleasant Valley. So, all, all of those within six months will get service. And if we can figure out that there are any others in between now and when we sign the franchise, we really need to be reaching out to do that, they will get it as well. So, that's sort of the baseline model for extension of service. And as the mayor mentioned, there's what we're calling the Greenfield Program, which basically says if a subdivision development is platted to the standards, the 20-household-per-cable-mile standard, then as long as they receive proper notice, they are lawfully required to lay the lines, or run them up the poles, or whatever that is done, whether it's underground or above ground, at the time of the laying of the utility lines. So, no one in these new subdivisions will move in and have to wait for cable. And then, for any property that falls outside of those two, one of those two things, and frankly, I'm not sure what that, what those would be. But in order to capture that possibility, houses that later meet the same density requirement that we're talking about would have, would receive service within four months of requesting service. So, it's a market improvement over the existing line extension policy.
How do businesses come into play? I know that was something that we talked about, and there are businesses in the community right now that, that the same situation applies. It's a pretty hefty financial contribution to be able to get the, get the service. And they're, they're well within the boundaries. Are they, are they addressed as well?
They are not. You know, bear in mind that we're really not talking about internet here. Even though we, what we're really hoping to talk about is internet, we are really only by law able to attack this from a cable standpoint. And they don't really cover commercial, but I think that's a conversation that we'll have to have.
I mean, there's some.
With them as an ongoing business partner.
Well, there are, there are benefits to businesses other than just having access to cable. I mean, there's the credit card transaction, there's security features that this would provide as well.
Right.
And that has been an issue. I'm just wondering, how can we? I'm just wondering, how can we, is there, is it too late in the game to be able to, to put something in here to address that issue?
I don't, I don't know that it's ever too late. I mean, there, there will, there is a deadline at this point.
Yeah.
That says if we don't have an agreement by a certain date.
Well, you mentioned if there are any other neighborhoods that need to be added to let you know.
Right.
So I guess, I was wondering...
Well, the good news is, we're not, they're not asking us to sign a franchise tonight. They're, they're asking us to approve the form of this franchise and to approve the merger. But we will have time to gather that information and get, make sure that we're on the same page as far as the neighborhoods that need to be added before we actually sign on the dotted line for the franchise.
I think it's a very relevant question. And David, my sense is, given the lengthy and numerous conversations we've had with these folks, that they understand the importance of Georgetown as an emerging market. We've sold that point to them very hard.
Yeah.
We've sold the point that we're the, we're probably the fastest-growing city in Kentucky and the fastest-growing county in Kentucky, and our business opportunities are just bursting at the seams. I would expect, given the tenor of our conversations, that they're going to be receptive to us talking about how we specifically help business. And I'm sorry, I can't give you that specific outcome of that conversation tonight.
That's okay.
But I do think that it needs to go on our agenda.
Okay.
And in the spirit that they've negotiated with us, I would have every expectation that they give us similar access for our businesses.
The mayor and I sat down with a representative from Charter. This was a executive-level representative, and laid out our concerns. And I even used you without name as an example. We've got business members here who are saying they cannot get the kind of high-speed internet access that they need, the kind of data connections that they need. What do you all plan to do to address that? We bluntly asked that question. And their business model, that the new CEO's new business model is going to completely flip the traditional model of providing cable service. They recognize that the market has changed for entertainment or service to, people want bandwidth. They want fast speeds. And they want to be able to judge for themselves where they get their content. And they also recognize that businesses are attracted to and make the best broadband customers. So they, they represented to us that that was going to be part of their new business model, was to greatly increase, I think they said, that Time Warner's minimum connection speed is 16 meg. And throughout the rest of the country, Charter's minimum speed is 60 meg. So almost triple. Yeah, more than triple.
Yeah.
So I guess, to a certain extent, we have to take that for, for what they're representing. I mean, we, we have the other communities that they represent as, as models. But we're, we're all in uncharted territory here, you know, given that we've never had exposure here to Charter. I, I actually, we, we got out a map and we showed them, you know, the way that Georgetown seems to sort of be expanding. You've got the, the business community tend to push out Cherry Blossom, out 62, and then you've got this sort of older established area. And said, what we really want to see ultimately, and soon, sooner rather than later, is a fiber link from one end to the city to the other, so people can tap into that. And with the governor's initiative of running a new fiber line right up Interstate 75, it just makes sense. And, and we got lots of nods about that. That's, I mean, really, as far as the commercial aspect, that's about the best that I can tell you. None of the other cable franchises that I'm aware of address commercial, commercial properties, commercial service.
I guess I would just say that in your conversations, if there's an opportunity to ask, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask and try to push that issue a little bit. If, if people in this community didn't push to, to disband the long-distance calling between Georgetown and Lexington, it never would have happened. And think of the money that that has saved this community and the convenience that, that there's, I mean, it's been huge economically. We don't even realize that, and sometimes we forget about it, we take it for granted. But if you've got a business that's sitting in front of an anchor, an anchor the size of a Walmart, you know, or a Kroger, and I'm, I'm not advocating those because of my involvement, I'm just saying a business is there, and they don't have this, this availability, it can impact the business. And that's what we live off of, is the revenue from, from those businesses. So...
David, I don't, I don't think it's just, can we, can there be an opportunity? I think I can assure you, there will be an opportunity, and we'll make that a priority conversation.
Yeah.
And then be glad to report back to the council the nature of that conversation.
You know, if you look up Charter, if you look it up on the internet, and I know there's all kinds of stuff on the internet, but there's nothing positive about them. Now, there may be a new, a new CEO that you're talking about that we're working with, but everything is negative about Charter. It's about their billing and their service. It's all negative. So it almost sounds like what we don't get done today, even though there's a new CEO at the helm, it may not get done for them. But even related next to Time Warner, Comcast, and then you go to Charter, it's the worst of the worst according to what the internet people report back on it, so...
Here, here's the other thing I want to say that's a positive, Mayor, that if you and your staff hadn't pushed this item to this council, I mean, we probably would have gone along with every other community. We've, we would have already executed this agreement, the way I understand it. But because of the initiative that you all put forward, at least we've got the opportunity to negotiate some of these, these, these items and make it, make it better for our citizens and our community. So I want to thank all of you, whoever was involved. I'm not sure whose idea it was, but it was a good one.
Thank you. And yeah, I, I remember the first time we brought this up, and we realized that we were going to end up with Charter. We even commented that historically, their service has been worse than Time Warner's. We, we have talked this issue till we're blue in the face with these folks. And when, when they talk to us about community partnerships and be willing Joe to work with planning and zoning in a prospective way to make sure that all greenfields are serviced without hassle and without additional expense, when they made line extension policy concessions to us that other communities around us aren't receiving, I, I think they were, they were coming toward us as, as much as they could. I, I won't be Pollyanna and say that through my rose-colored glasses, this will all be fine, but I do have an expectation that this company behave in the manner in which they presented themselves.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know Lexington did this to Time Warner, or just in case, you know, worst-case scenario, you know, they, they don't live up to expectations. Are there any sort of penalty fees? Or what happens if they don't live up to this? Like if they don't follow this guideline? Are they, is that an FCC violation, or is it...
I think we can contractually force them to live, live up
Okay.
To these, these line extension policies.
Okay.
They're, they're not ambiguous, Holly. They're clear.
Yeah.
They're direct statements. They have direct amounts of time attached to them.
Yeah, I just always think of, you know, worst-case, worst-case, you know, for some...
You live in an attorney family. I understand.
Yeah.
And, and I'm unaware of penalties, Andrew, other than our ability to enforce them.
The monetary penalties are limited to loss of service.
Oh, okay.
To, to things like, let's say, some catastrophe happened and somebody was without cable for a week. Well, theoretically, they're entitled to a refund for that.
Okay.
And, but there are, there are non-monetary penalties for failing to live up to the obligations. We can cancel the franchise.
Oh, okay.
Or we can...
Okay.
We can take them to court. We can, we can always sue for injunctive relief, that kind of thing. It's not...
I mean, I think it's, I mean, really good, and I know, you know, for the new subdivisions or even Pleasant Valley, this will just solve a lot of headaches that people are, you know, it's so stressing people out not to have cable or internet at this point. So I mean, I think in having it, you know, treating it as a utility for new development, I think it's, it's wonderful. I think it'll really take a lot of stress off of people.
Good. Much of the, the length of this document is legalese about if the company goes out of business, or eventualities that are unlikely to happen, but...
Emergency alert overrides, and antenna switches, and standby power, and things that don't.
That are typical of most franchise agreements.
Yeah.
But we're, we're happy to take, even though it's brought to you at the last hour tonight, we're happy to take as much as time as we want to walk through the document with you. Yes, sir, Mark?
Are you getting ready to ask a question, Andrew?
I was going to have him go over something, but you go ahead.
If you flip over to page two, item number seven and item number eight.
Where are we on the resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Just flip over to the backside of that. Item seven's pretty self-explanatory. It talks about a certain group of subdivisions that will occur within 60 days of the city's adoption of this resolution, which is pretty, that makes sense. Item number eight talks about a different group of subdivisions.
Right.
But it says those subdivisions, talks about six months, within six months of Charter's acquisition of the franchisee. When, when will that, do we have a, either a definitive date or an estimated date of when that...
What that split...
Clock starts ticking?
What that split represents is, we, we pulled all the information that we had together and tried to poll our citizens to say, hey, if you don't have cable service or can't get access to us, let us know. We put that together and compiled it, and sent it to them and said, here, here are the areas we're told don't have cable. And they went back and they reviewed their records, and they felt like the sections that are going to get it within 60 days are either already underway, or will shortly be, and therefore, they put it within the 60 days. And the others, they're less sure about. So the, the standard that's in the franchise is six months. It doesn't make that split. This is sort of something that they've come up with as an additional, we'll, we'll get these done, or these are already in process. So six months is the standard set in the franchise. If you take a snapshot of the, what's out there as of the day that you sign the franchise, which will be at least a month away, if not more, it still has to be bid and awarded at two readings, then bid, then awarded, then another two readings. So it's, that franchise signing date is some time away, a couple of months. From that point forward is when you'll see that. But the thing is, they're already working on those other subdivisions, so...
But on item number eight, though.
Right.
Did I hear you correctly in stating that where the anticipation is, is that, that acquisition will be completed before the end of this year, correct? Or did you, did I misunderstand?
Acquisition...
Charter's acquisition of the franchisee. So I guess my question is, on item number eight, for those group of subdivisions, when can they, if this passes, if we, as a whole passes, do we have an estimated timeframe of when those subdivisions can anticipate having cable service?
If we, if we complete our work, Mark, with, with the franchise agreement, not just this resolution, but the full franchise agreement, if we can do that within two months, then we'd be looking at a maximum of eight months for those subdivisions.
Yeah, that, that language, within six months of Charter's acquisition of franchisee, I want you all to take that and scratch that language out, because that's not right. That's not what the franchise will state. It's, it is not what the franchise states. That, that's, it's six months of the date of the signing of the franchise. The acquisition of Charter by the franchisee technically, in the interest of full disclosure, might not even happen. It, it, we're, we're still waiting on the justice cabinet and the FCC to approve that merger, and they're being very tight-lipped about it. They would give no indication of whether they're going to grant that merger. There's all kinds of rumors flying around about, you know, antitrust, this and that. So again, what we're truly trying to do is make the very best of a difficult situation here. But that language regarding Charter's acquisition of franchisee, that, that should be eliminated. That reflects an old version before we change the franchise.
Mark, as we've negotiated with Charter, and we've talked about our need to get immediate attention for some of these neighborhoods that have struggled with service, they've been working with Time Warner, because Time Warner is actually at the helm today. So they've been getting some of these assurances from Time Warner, so that we could know those processes were moving forward, even as they play out their large-scale legal games. So the commitments that we've gotten on, on the neighborhoods that are specifically listed, are commitments that Time Warner has made to Charter. We're actually doing this negotiation with, it's actually going to apply to three different companies. It's part of the reason it's been difficult on their side, as, as we insisted on certain language that we wanted for Georgetown, that's different from what they negotiated with some other cities. And as we negotiated our ability to replace our equipment, they were having to go through three different, three different sign-offs with three different companies to make sure that everything we're negotiating applies to all three companies, regardless of how their legal wrestling ends up.
So what's, what's Exhibit A?
Exhibit A is the franchise itself. The franchise ordinance.
All right, so if we pass, we have passed...
No, we have not.
Well, how do you pass this before you pass the ordinance?
What you're, what you're committing to is that you will pass an ordinance in substantially similar form.
But a resolution really doesn't have the weight of an ordinance, so if we agree...
And I said that to them. I actually said that. Look, you've got to understand that this, you are not technically binding this council to pass anything. The only thing that you are technically doing is consenting to the transfer of control. What we have is an understanding that we have these minimum terms when we decide to, when we decide to bid this franchise out. The whole idea of bidding the franchise is such a backwards thing from, you know, the way you normally do this kind of thing. You negotiate first, then you bid it out, because there's no really other way to do it. What we have is a, an agreement. This is the terms that they're willing to agree to. Technically, we could negotiate something different, now they don't have to bid on it. What we're, what we're, from a pure procedural standpoint doing right here is recognizing that our leverage to get them to agree to better franchise terms stops with our ability to deny the transfer of control. And they've basically said, we're not going to give you any more extensions. Either we approve the tran, the franchise as we've negotiated, or you guys go to Plan B, which is you deny, or, or you just let it lapse and it automatically gets approved, and then we're just really going to hurt. So those are the, in the world of options, those are the three. We approve the transfer of control, we don't approve it, and it gets deemed approved, or we deny it, and we basically go to court over why we denied it.
So the ordinance, is the ordinance what has, since that just got here tonight, that's what has the agreement in it, is in the ordinance?
No.
What has the, what, what you all have agreed upon?
Yeah, that's, yes.
Is there anything more than just what's in, is right here?
Yes, the ordinance, the ordinance is the franchise. It's, what we're saying is to all people who offer cable service, here... It's, what we're saying is to all people who offer cable service, here are the terms that you have to agree by in order to provide it within the city of Georgetown.
And the things you talked about with the line issues and all that's in the...
All in the ordinance, yes.
In the ordinance. And when are we doing, when are we scheduling the ordinance?
We will hopefully have first reading of that at the next council meeting.
Okay. And do you, you talked about the extension of the lines, and in the assumption agreement, there are mentions of subdivisions, but for future subdivisions, you talked about that being as, as they're planned, it's in there. So, as we're annexing in the future, they're covered in this?
They are. There is specific language regarding annexed properties.
What about property that's already implanted and zoned, and I guess that's annexed into the city? You said, once they start building, they've got to put the lines in, correct?
Yes.
Once they lay out the property, so it should have it all covered.
Anything that has not received, the exact language is, let's see. Whenever the recorded plat indicates the development will meet the same density standard grantee shall...
Some plats.
We would, we would have to, you'd have to make a judgment call as to when in the process they were, but the language is broad enough to cover any development currently underway that has not yet opened up the trenches or laid the utility lines.
So, some flats already been recorded, will they be covered under this too? Okay, okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Joe, we think this is an improvement going forward.
I mean, we have many, we have a lot of those subdivisions that, you know, are planted in phases and won't, won't basically yet be planted in front of families. So, if this would ditch that, Mark, based on the budget balance to provide cable service and that, we're in a recession.
We're going to have to make some tweaks to the approval process. For instance, to require developers to either give us the proper notice or give charter or the franchise or franchisee the proper notice required by the franchise to say, if they don't get the 30 days notice that they're entitled to, they're not bound to do anything. So, we have to make sure developer says, hey, this is your 30 days notice, your minimum of 30 days notice that the trenches are gonna be opened up, get your trucks mobilized to come and lay down the lines. So, we'll have to make some tweaks, and maybe we can discuss tweaks to the, how the plating works with the phases and things like that.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
I've jumped ahead a little bit, so if you were, if you're going to cover what I'm getting ready to ask, just tell me, just to hold off. Section 10 discusses violations that could, there's a whole, two to three pages, actually more, talks about violations that can mean up to and including potential fines. If we, can we use that, those two items that I just mentioned, in item seven and item eight, on the second page?
Of the resolution?
Of the resolution. And let's just say hypothetically, if you just use item seven as an example, for those subdivisions that are mentioned in item seven, if those subdivisions are not completed within 60 days of the passage of this resolution, if we so pass this resolution, that's when a violation would start to incur, after the, starting on the 61st day?
Correct.
And the same thing with item...
From what date, I'm sorry, the resolution?
Starting on the 61st day, or does it go retroactive?
After following what?
Day one.
Well, following the franchise.
Following the franchise, yeah. Starting, starting the date following the franchise is executed.
So, in this case, it would start on the 61st day?
Correct.
And would keep going until that got completed?
No, wait, wait, I'm sorry. You're asking if we can use the language in the resolution to hold it for the 60 days instead of the six months?
From the assumption agreement, yeah.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at it that way. The agreement that we've come to is what's in the franchise. What I'm saying is that the fact that they've agreed to those 60 days is their statement. Yeah, we'll get it within 60 days because we've already started it. We've already, we've already started the build-out. But this is, the resolution is our statement of...
Okay, so what happens if they don't, let's say it takes them 140 days?
If it's still within the six months that is required in the franchise, we're not, we can't go after them.
It's not what item seven says.
Seven says.
Right.
I have a question, you get down.
Okay, go ahead.
We're only doing the consent to transfer of control from Comcast to charter, right, for one resolution, and then the other one is to consent to transfer control. This assumption agreement to franchise is what you're gonna bring to us two weeks from tonight.
Yeah.
But tied together?
There are actually, there are actually four documents here.
Okay.
The first one is a resolution consenting to transfer of control, and it has provisions in it that summarize what we're agreeing to in the franchise. And maybe that's where everybody's getting tripped up.
Right, yep.
And if we want to take those out, let's take them out. If there's any question of whether there's confusion between the two, what I'm saying is it's the franchise that controls. Then you have two assumption agreements, and those assumption agreements are saying that whatever the current franchisee, which is Time Warner, agrees to, so to do the charter and Comcast folks who will be assuming those obligations. And then you have the franchise agreement itself, which is, again, it's, it's not fair to call it an agreement. That's not really what it is. It's an ordinance that says, here are the minimum parameters that cable companies have to abide by within the city of Georgetown. But if you make those parameters too broad, the cable company doesn't bid on a franchise and they pack up and move out of town.
Okay. So, tonight, the only thing you're asking for is the consent to transfer of control and consent to transfer, wait, why do I have two?
I don't know, I have it two, and I was confused.
Two of each?
I have two.
I apologize, that's...
So, I don't have, I don't...
Shouldn't, but...
One is consent to transfer of control, and what's the other resolution?
You have an assumption agreement?
I've got the assumption agreement.
You have two assumptions agreements, one for charter and one for Comcast.
Okay. Oh, gotcha. Okay.
And those are exhibits, those are Exhibits B and C to the resolution. Exhibit A is the franchise ordinance.
Okay.
So, what they're saying is, see, the consent to, of transfer could say nothing more than the city hereby consents to transfer, and that would be the end of the agreement. You reference the FCC provisions, the Form 394. This is instead recognizing that as part of the consent, we're expecting to, we have negotiated a new franchise agreement, and it's a very enartful way of stating that, that we plan to immediately after this is done, move to that franchise. Time is not really our best friend here. Things are admittedly kind of backwards.
Let me go back to Mark's question again. I just want to make sure we're clear on it, Mark. The franchise agreement is the greater of these documents. That's the one that's gonna be long-term binding. Where we have tried to, you know, it's clear to me that if we've got some subdivisions that are needing attention quickly, we wanted to bring those to the company's attention and ask them how quickly they could get our folks' relief. They agreed to those things, so we put it into this resolution because that's what they've agreed to us to do. And I think that's appropriate for us to ask for as fast a progress as we can make on items, especially item seven. But we're gonna be governed by the franchise agreement. The resolution is simply our best effort to represent what we've negotiated.
Remember, the resolution is...
Non-binding.
It's non-binding. It's a statement of approval, essentially, in the best of terms, but it is, for purposes of the FCC, Form 394, sufficient to say to the federal government that we, as franchisors, pursuant to state law, approve of the transfer of control to...
Charter.
Charter, to Comcast, then to charter.
Time Warner, Comcast, Comcast, Charter.
That, that, right. That's really what has gotten us here. That's the function of this document. But because we know that that is our last opportunity, that that's the last mile before we lose any leverage that we have against the big giant cable companies...
Okay.
We're also talking franchise terms.
So, is this the ordinance that we're gonna be looking at for next?
Exactly.
And this is the one that we read and have questions about? We need to address them?
Yes.
But how can we change, how, how much can we really change out of the ordinance if we've, if we've already approved, if you all have already negotiated what's in the, what's in the ordinance in the franchise, really how much can the council change it without jeopardizing the negotiations? Does that matter?
We, once we approve the consent, they have zero incentive, well, I'm not gonna say zero, they want to be a community partner. That, that's the extent of the incentive that they have to approve changes that we have that would make it more stringent.
I'll repeat that one more time, please.
Once we approve the transfer, they're, they are not strongly incentivized...
Okay.
...to, to allow us any changes to the ordinance itself.
Yeah, we've utilized all of our leverage to get where, what we brought you tonight.
You know, I have...
I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, we've used all the leverage that you all have provided for us to negotiate the deal that's before us at this point. I really can't improve on that.
So, if we don't move forward with this, what happens?
We go back probably to whatever the Kentucky Regional Cable Consortium is gonna get for 15 other cities, and we're way ahead of that at this point.
All this negotiation has done is took care of a lot of citizens in this community that doesn't have cable and doesn't have internet, which they will have within probably six months, maybe to nine months.
Well, the negative part of it, the flip side of that, is with voting, knowing what you know about Comcast slash charter, what you hear of them, yes, it may be voting to get some people and more people in the community an access to the internet or to, to the cable companies, but on the flip side, are we giving them better service once they get to that one by agreeing that it's okay with us to have them?
We can say no, but it's not gonna change these cable companies doing their deal.
Yeah, we're gonna get them one way or the other.
It's the old phrase that I've mentioned with several of you, if you're gonna get run over by a steamroller, at least get your pants creased.
There's something to be said for the fact that...
They'll be on front page, Tom.
I hope not, I hope not. Actually, I have to credit Wendell Ford for giving me that bit of wisdom.
But it's gonna happen one way or the other.
It's gonna happen.
Something's gonna happen, and whether we kind of step up and do what best we can for the community, it could be a lot worse for the community.
Well, I think it also boils down to this. We have our mayor and we have our city attorney sitting down with these people...
Right.
...across the table, and we're taking their word for it, which we should be able to do that...
Right.
...at this point. They are more customer service oriented, that they want to be a partner, a community partner. And if, and if it's on a timeframe, like you said, it's not binding. This resolution is not binding, right? We're moving forward.
The resolution's not binding, but, but if we've negotiated in good faith...
Right, exactly.
Then it is binding.
It becomes binding.
Well, your word has to be good for something.
And, and I believe that, I believe that while you're negotiating, anything is okay, and you can ask for the world. And several times, I think we've shocked these people. But once, once you nod your head and once you shake hands, I think negotiations are done.
Right. Well, I think the other thing is, too, I know that charter's supposed to be like at the bottom of the, as far as, you know, supposed to be all that well, but there's gotta be something said for Time Warner selling to Comcast and then Comcast selling to charter. Something's going on there for charter to be the big boy.
Money, that's all it is.
Well, that could make them raise theirself up to be a higher standard.
According to the internet, and then this is according to internet, because you know everything's true on the internet.
Bonjour, exactly.
That's true.
But that charter had gone bankrupt and walked away from, I forgot now what the obligation was that they had, but they just walked away from it. So, that makes you uncomfortable with them, what happens if they become our carrier and then that happens again, that, that it, because of this deal, maybe they go bankrupt. I don't know.
But we can't control that.
We can control that.
And, and kind of what I was saying earlier, anything that's negotiated at this point is kind of a bonus to us.
Right, right.
Because, you know, we would've been with the pack and we'd...
We're going back and revisiting briefly how we got here and the fact that this, while we've been negotiating frantically for the past week, two weeks, really, we didn't start two weeks ago. KRCC has been working on negotiating better terms for the cable consortium, of which we are a member, for the better part of six months, perhaps longer. Yeah, it has been longer. We started talking about this mid-last year. And a couple of communities, Danville and Somerset, and now ourselves, sort of stepped out of the mold a little bit and said, we want either more or we want something different. Somerset went almost as far as to say, we're gonna deny the transfer of control, and Time Warner came down and negotiated with them, and they were able to come to favorable terms. Danville wanted an extension of their PEG channel to be run to their library, so they indicated that's, that's a line in the sand for us. So, Time Warner said, or Charter said, okay, we'll, we'll negotiate to that. All the others have done the standard KRCC deal. And the Danville franchise is sort of the standard model. That's what we worked off of here, and we said, okay, give us at least what they're getting, but we want more. And we really drilled down into that line extension language and talked to them about supporting a complete redoing of this room. And so, that's exactly correct. We're, yes, we're sort of over a barrel here. There's no sugarcoating it, but we're, we're making the best of the situation by, by stepping up and asserting ourselves. And that's really, I realize this looks very messy and complicated, and that's because it is. There's, there's no denying it. It is messy, but we've been on the phone for weeks, and we feel like we've come to the best possible terms that we can, and we're satisfied that we're not getting any worse of a deal than anybody else in Kentucky is. We're just lucky that in Kentucky, we have the ability to directly influence people like charter. You go to another state, and we just get whatever the state says that we're gonna get. So, we're at least in a little bit better position. And I, I apologize, I take ownership for the fact that this thing is messy, but it is advantageous. And, you know, I'm, I'm willing to go through whatever terms you want, but I'm confident in that them being no worse than what we've got and, and better. Although we do need to still cover the local office issue, we haven't got to that.
Mm-hmm.
I say it's no worse, but there is a provision there, and it was, it's one of the major sticking points for the KRCC, that they are only going to be required to keep our local office open for three years. Beyond that, it's at their discretion. Part of the compromise is they agreed to provide at least one free option for people to do all business that they would do at a local office, whether it be a free voucher for mailing in, or, you know, they send you the prepaid box to mail back your... for mailing in, or, you know, they send you the prepaid box to mail back your, your cable box, or to pay your bills online, or pre-stamped envelopes, that kind of thing, so they have, they have committed if, and that's a big if, if they ever did close the local office, they would, they would provide that, they have represented to us informally, unofficially, that because Georgetown is such an important market to them, that they have no plans at least to do that.
We, we had actually touched on this in an earlier meeting, that we've been more focused on line extension policy as our desired outcome, and the local office was just not that big a deal for us, there are some of the smaller cities in the KRCC for which that is their burning issue. It, it, it helped our negotiations to let them know that we think that ought to be an operational decision that the corporation ought to make, as long as our citizens have adequate ways to get their bills done, bills checked, devices mailed back and forth, and we've been assured that would be the case. I do believe that given the importance of Georgetown, and the reason we were so successful in these negotiations is, is I'm not going to say it was a great work by Andrew or me, I think it was, it's the status of our city, and the fact that this is an important city, and that they, they need to pay attention to us as an important city, now, we've been willing to make those points with them, but we don't make that real, our, our city makes that real, and that's been the real advantage we've had, I would be shocked if they ever wanted to close an office here, we're just, we've got too much going on, but I think that ought to be their operational decision and not the council's decision, so we've got at least three years, and we've got some way to ease that burden if they ever close
There?
Yes, sir.
I'd like for you to read the resolution.
I said like for you to do it.
No, he meant for me to cause it to be read, is what he meant.
Tracey, pass it over.
Consent to transfer of control, whereas Tom Warner Cable Midwest LLC franchisee is lawfully operating a cable television system in the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, the city under a franchise, the franchise, and whereas the franchisee and the city have negotiated mutually acceptable terms and conditions of franchise renewal pertaining to the new franchise, the new franchise, attached to this resolution as exhibit A, and whereas the city will shortly commence the process for formal approval of the new franchise, and whereas on February 12th, 2014 Comcast Corporation, Comcast and Tom Warner Cable, TWC, the ultimate parent company of franchisee, and Tango Acquisition Inc., Tango, entered into an agreement and plan of merger pursuant to which TWC will merge with Tango, a wholly owned subsidiary of Comcast, with TWC as a surviving company. TWC became a wholly owned subsidiary of Comcast and Comcast suffered the consumption of its merger with TWC, becoming the ultimate parent company of franchisee, the Comcast transaction, and whereas on or about April 9th, 2014 Comcast submitted an FCC Form 394 to the city, and whereas on April 25th, 2014 Charter Communications Inc., Charter, and Comcast entered into the Comcast Charter Transactions Agreement and contingent upon Comcast's consumption of its acquisition of Tom Warner Cable pursuant to which franchisee through a restructuring under Comcast ownership will become CTW Cell LLC Delaware Limited Liability Company, and immediately thereafter will become a wholly owned subsidiary of Charter, Charter transaction, and whereas Charter filed an FCC Form 394 to the city with respect thereto, and whereas the city has considered and approved the Comcast transaction and the Charter transaction, subject to the conditions set forth in the body of the resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city of Georgetown as follows. The four going recitals are approved and incorporated herein by reference, one, the city consents to the Comcast and Charter transactions contingent on the receipt of required approvals of the transactions from the federal government, Federal Communications Commission, and the United States Department of Justice, said consent does not constitute and shall not be construed to constitute a waiver of any lawful obligations of the franchisee Comcast and/or Charter under the new franchise. Two, the city confirms that the franchise is valid and outstanding in full force and effect, subject to compliance with the terms of this resolution, all action necessary to approve the transfer of control of the franchisee to Comcast and the transfer of control of the franchisee to Charter has been duly and validly taken. Three, the city confirms that it shall, it will shortly commence the process for formal approval of the new franchise and will accept franchisee's bid for the new franchise. Four, Comcast or the franchisee may, A, assign or transfer its assets, including the franchise and/or the new franchise, provided that such assignment or transfer is to an entity directly or indirectly controlling, controlled by, or under common control with Comcast, B, restructure debt or change the ownership interest among existing equity participants in Comcast, C, pledge or grant a security interest to any lender or lenders of Comcast assets, including but not limited to the new franchise or of interest in Comcast for purposes of securing any indebtedness, and D, sell equity interest in Comcast or any of Comcast affiliates. Five, Charter or the franchisee may, A, assign or transfer or transfer its assets, including the franchise and/or the new franchise, provided that such assignments or transfer is to an entity directly or indirectly controlling, controlled by, or under common control with Charter, B, restructure debt or change the ownership interest among existing equity participants in Charter, C, pledge or grant a security interest to any lender, lenders or Charter's assets, including but not limited to the new franchise or of interest in Charter, for purposes of securing any indebtedness, and D, sell equity interest in Charter of any Charter affiliates. Six, franchisees shall remain bound by the lawful terms and conditions of the new franchise when it is approved by the city. Seven, franchisees shall, consistent with the terms and conditions of Section 14 of the new franchise, extend and make cable television service available to the Ward Hall Estates, Rocky Creek and Pleasant Valley subdivisions within sixty days of the city's adoption of this resolution. Eight, franchisees shall, consistent with the terms and conditions of Section 14 of the new franchise, extend and make cable television service available to Rocky Creek Reserve, McClellan Springs, McClellan View, The Colony, and The Abbey at Old Oxford subdivisions within six months of Charter's acquisition of franchisee. Nine, franchisees shall maintain a local office in the city pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in Section 24 Subsection C of the new franchise. Ten, upon closing of Comcast transaction, franchisees shall remain bound by the lawful terms and conditions of the new franchise and the Comcast Assumption Agreement attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference as Exhibit B. Eleven, upon closing of the Charter transaction, Charter shall remain bound by the lawful terms and conditions of the new franchise and the Charter Assumption Agreement attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference as Exhibit C. Twelve, this resolution shall be deemed effective upon adoption. Thirteen, the resolution shall have the force of a continuing agreement with Charter, Comcast, franchisee, and the city, and the city shall not amend or otherwise alter this resolution without the consent of franchisee and Charter. Fourteen, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the assumption agreements, Exhibits B and C, on behalf of the city.
Is there a motion for approval?
So, move.
Mr. Thompson with the motion.
Second.
Ms. Erdley with the second.
Marvin, you might make your motion to include that change we discussed earlier, striking through Charter's acquisition of franchisee and instead saying, within six months of execution of franchise agreement.
That's how the motion should read, then, right there.
Thank you.
Number eight, Andrew.
Yes.
Yeah.
Was that your second as well, Paulie? Thank you. If there, it's a pretty big event with a lot of complexity and a lot of questions, I'd be happy to ask the clerk to do a roll call of it.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Shawalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingleseems?
No, and the reason being just for the public, not necessarily for the minutes, but because I haven't read the new franchise, that's, it's mentioned two or three times in that resolution, I can't vote, vote for it.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries seven to one. Pat, are you the news graphic tonight? You're not? Okay, I'll give you a copy of the document.
I'll take it.
Okay, thank you all, we'll, to the extent we can, we are not going to bring you issues of this complexity and ask you to vote on them in one night. With the council's permission, I'd like to just slightly switch the order of our agenda. Bob, you've sat very patiently through a lot of long meetings, and before we get into stormwater, we thought we might let you go ahead and come before the council with your
Just have one item for approval, and another that's FYI to the council. First is approval of a purchase order to Derringer Excavating for the bid amount of fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars to replace existing concrete supports that are failing for gravity sewer crossing Royal Spring on the north end of Water Street. This quote is based upon our contractor's bid prices, and our board approved this as an emergency repair on February 24th, and also asking the council to approve it too, so we can address that situation.
Is there a motion for approval? Motion's been made, Ms. Tackett?
Second.
Ms. Seams? You're good. There are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you. The second thing, I just want to share with the council, annually, the Bluegrass Area Development District does a survey of water and sewer rates, and parpy taxes, and censuses, and everything like that, and we always look at this internally, but I think it's been a while since we've shared it with council, and I want to do that tonight, if I could have a few minutes to go over it. The first graph you see on page one, this is from our billing system, and the reason I want to point this out is, we'll be looking at consumptions of two thousand gallons, six thousand gallons, so two thousand gallons, which we consider a minimum rate customer, twenty-seven point four percent of our customers fall within that category, and then six thousand gallons or less, which is, that's more like an average monthly bill of all our residential customers, that represents eighty percent of our customers, and that's the two categories we'll be looking at. Page two, we're looking at comparison, there were eighteen cities in the Bluegrass area that participated in this survey, we're looking at like utilities that have a two thousand gallon minimum usage included in their base bill, you can see that we're second from the lowest at eight dollars and sixty-three cents a month, the average of that group is ten dollars and ninety-five cents, and the high is sixteen forty-two. The next page, as we look at all water bills in this group, of all usage of two thousand gallons per month, we are again second from the lowest at eight sixty-three, the average bill is twelve ninety-three, and the highest is nineteen forty-five. And then at six thousand gallons, which is more of your average usage, we're at twenty-eight oh one per month, the average is thirty-one forty-eight, and the highest forty-three dollars and sixty-six, forty-three dollars and sixty cents. The next chart on page five is just a graph of Kentucky American's water costs versus Georgetown water, Kentucky American is in green, Georgetown water's in blue, so you can readily see that all usages, Kentucky American is now significantly higher than Georgetown water, and that hasn't always been the case, but we're pleased that we were able to move it to that point. And then we do a like analysis on sewer bills, for two thousand gallon minimum bill, we are low van on the toll and pole, seven dollars and eighty-two cents, the average is fourteen sixty-four, almost twice what we are, and the highest twenty-one dollars. Page seven has all usages at two thousand gallons a month for sewer, again, we are by far the lowest at seven dollars and eighty-two cents, the average is thirteen eighty-nine, and the highest twenty-one thirty. And then also six thousand gallons of usage on sewer, we are at thirty dollars and fourteen cents, the average is thirty-eight ninety-eight, and the high is sixty-three ninety. So I think, I think those are all very favorable numbers, we're very pleased with how Georgetown prepared, and I have to give credit to our board and employees that have worked hard to keep costs down, we haven't had a rate increase since 2007, and there's very few utilities in the central part of Kentucky that could say that, so I want to give credit to, again, to our employees and our supervisors that try to find the best costs that we can, or we have to go out and purchase something.
Bob, I think it's, it's an outstanding report, it, it does bear mentioning to the council again that we, we have a flat rate water schedule, correct?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm glad that the graph showing Kentucky American and, and our system at all water usages shows us below that trend line, because historically, on our higher volume users, those lines may have intersected.
Right, now, we're just looking at residential usages on that graph, I mean, it's possible that for a commercial or industrial user, Kentucky American would be cheaper, but we're just looking at residents.
Yeah, the council, a number of years ago, took that very bold step of going to a flat rate, rate schedule, so every unit of water costs the same, there's no discount as you use larger amounts of water, and that's actually, it looks like it's, it's served us very well. I had another question, Bob, but I lost it.
What can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
The sewer in Lexington looked like there weren't, they were not a whole lot higher than us, but then their water is astronomical compared to us, is it because of the new water plant, is that the difference why the sewer, their sewers close to ours, but their water is so much higher?
Well, in Lexington, it's split, Kentucky American does the water, but the Urban County Government does the sewer.
Ah, that explains it.
So they don't necessarily go in lock.
The water company doesn't have anything to do with it.
Right.
Gotcha.
So the sewer's nonprofit, essentially, and the water is for profit.
Yeah, yeah, Kentucky America's a private loan company, and they do, they do need to make a profit.
That explains it.
And they've built, you know, they've built a, a big new plant on, on the Kentucky River in Owen County, and they've got to pay for it.
It, it, it's true in municipal government, if you look at the last graph that Bob presented us on, on page eight, which is sewer, sewage usage, and typically, as you read a chart like this, you can know that the, this is typically, and the operations matter and, and the board's activities matter, usually those listed on the left-hand side of the graph have not had a recent big capital improvement that had to go through a rate schedule, and those on the right side of the page, typically, you can find they've had a very large capital improvement project that they had to fund through their rate schedule, so these things are just a snapshot in time, and they give you some illustration of how long it's been since you did a big project. It's not lost on me that the highest sewer bill, by far and away, is sixty-three dollars and ninety cents in Winchester, ours is only thirty dollars. Winchester is dealing with stormwater runoff, and they've used their city utility to be involved in that process.
Good to know.
So that's handy information, as we deal with both sewer rate issues and stormwater cost, some of those issues are reflected in these graphs, and there's a story to be told in these graphs. I suspect if the council shocked Bob and the GMWSS board and formed a stormwater utility and asked the water company to be our stormwater utility, we may see a reshuffling of these rates as well, but we won't do that with you tonight, Bob. I just thought it'd be handy for the council to understand the, the relationship between some of these numbers and what activities are on the ground.
Well, in Winchester, they've also been under compulsion to update their wastewater facilities also, and I'm not, I'm not knocking them, they've got some good people there too, but, you know, sometimes you only can defer maintenance and defer projects so long, eventually it's going to come back and bite you.
With the big rate increases, yeah, we appreciate the work of your board, and you, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your awesome support.
Now you, now you know why he had you come first, because you're on leave, and then we're going, you're going to be the stormwater utility.
That's right.
Didn't want you to hear it, Bob.
Getting out of here.
You can leave if you want.
I bet you can leave.
Call the board, man.
Thank you. Okay, if we could back up on our agenda to item eight, continued discussion of the post-construction stormwater ordinance, and just to quickly recap, we, we've got one large decision before us, and it's the one that we drilled down into pretty far at the last council meeting, whether or not we want this to be our first steps as we approach this issue, to be. this to be our first steps as we approach this issue, to be handled by citizens having responsibilities for the best management practices, or a hybrid system where the city takes some of that responsibility. And with that, I'd be glad to open it up for council questions or comments. It's our hope that we can reach a consensus tonight on which of those two paths we want to follow, so that we can bring an ordinance back to you for our March 23rd council meeting. Even on that schedule, we're going to spell over the end of month, the end of the month, we can call a special called meeting, but I'm just not sure it's necessary, you all been to a lot of special called meetings in the last two months. Kyle, anything to add for the good of the order?
Wanted to make sure everybody got the email that included the two ordinances, one for property owner and one, which was Danville, Richmond, and then the, the shared hybrid, which was Lexington ordinance, as well as the spreadsheet, if you decide you want to go through the exercise of picking what responsibilities a HOA or a homeowner, property owner would be responsible for, versus what the city would be responsible for in a hybrid option. Just want to make sure you all got that, had a chance to look at.
What do we do with it if we filled it out, just give it to you, or is it just kind of to make us think?
It was more for you all to go through the process and think about it a little more in depth, so you could make the best decision.
And I think the reason we wanted you to have that data was, if we're going to select the property owner model, and there seemed to be an emerging consensus that that may be the case at our last meeting, then that will be our decision, we'll craft the ordinance in that direction, and there's not a need to walk through those systems of best management practices, and which one may fall in either category. If we're going to take the shared model, then that would be a helpful exercise, I just want, don't want us to slog through something that's not going to be beneficial to your ultimate decision until you really need to.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question? Kyle, or anyone for that matter, did, did your office speak with anyone in Lexington to determine why they went with the hybrid model versus just having the citizens pay it?
I didn't speak with anyone specifically, I'm sure Strand could probably answer that question a little bit better, because they've dealt with numerous municipalities, but in my opinion, they want to take the larger, more important, more expensive
Right.
parts of maintenance off of the homeowner's responsibility, essentially.
Yeah.
Sometimes those things take a little more detail, are more important function of the BMB.
Yeah, I read, I read through all that, and then that's kind of what I gathered up, I'm sure probably most of us did as well. I did have the opportunity to talk to Joe Kane at planning zoning, a little bit about the situation with the HOAs, and Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you made it pretty clear that, that we could require subdivisions to establish HOAs going forward. Still have a little bit of concern with, with, you know, smaller type projects that might, might take place within the city, that could have, you know, anywhere from just a couple, few lots, to, I don't know, somewhat larger number, and they may be, a fourplex, for example, might be required to put in, and I know they have to submit a development plan, is that right, Joe, for a fourplex? Theoretically, they could be required to put in some type of stormwater feature that might not only take care of their property, but, but some of the other properties around it, and, and I guess that's what I was trying to express at the last meeting, is some of the unknowns, the things that we can't sit here right now and foresee in the future, but there could exist a problem in the future with, with just it being totally exclusive towards the homeowner. I mean, I, I like in theory that idea, and everything, if everything played out perfectly well, I mean, that would be my preference, I just have concerns, and they're concerns that I'm not even sure what they are, if that makes sense, excuse me.
It, it absolutely makes sense, David, we, we know there are consequences to every decision the council makes, frequently, there are unintended consequences
Right.
to decisions that we make, and this one is fraught with both.
Yeah.
And I think we can make our best effort decision at this, I suspect the, I don't know this on a direct conversation, David, but I would suspect the reason Lexington went to the hybrid model is they had so much catching up to do.
Right.
That it would have been almost impossible to put all that burden on citizens.
That's a great point, where we're looking more in the forward, they were having to recapture some of the problems from the past.
Yes, sir.
Well, Mayor, do you have a strong recommendation, or Kyle, I guess, you know, after, after our, our last meeting, you're right, I mean, it seemed like the conversation kind of shifted a little bit back and forth.
And, and I'm, I'm prepared to answer that question, David, we, we've talked about this so much internally, and we've shared ideas, and we understand the dilemma that the council faces. This is one of those situations where, like the old debate club, you could literally be assigned either side of this question to debate, and you could debate it effectively, it's just that complicated. I have a little bit of comfort knowing that we're not locked into one path, if we begin on one path, and I think we all need to keep that in mind, because we can't make a decision that we're absolutely certain. Today, the citizens are responsible for these things, they already are. For the absolute, direct, simple, straightforward nature of leaving it as a citizen responsibility, I think it makes sense to start in that direction. I say that with, with the full understanding that this approach is going to require us to do some real strong things with homeowners' associations and other, other steps of the way we evaluate these best management practices. I think, absent our intent to take those steps and do them very aggressively, the first plan will not work, making it a citizen responsibility. I think we owe it to ourselves to, to begin a path and begin the hard work of revamping our HOAs and the way we deal with HOAs in the future, as an essential part of how we move forward. And because of those things, not my certainty that it's the right path, but because it, just from our internal conversations, it's about as close as we can get to an idea that we, we were leaning in that direction, again, with the comfort of knowing that this is not a forever decision, that it's simply a way to start. And, and I know it's repetitive, but we can easily debate both sides of this issue. But that, that was my thought, David.
Logically so.
But we'd be glad to hear from any other council member, and I know Karen, you had a slightly different point of view, and Chuck, you had a perspective that, that kind of matches the citizen thing, but this is a tough issue, I'd like for us to reach as much of a consensus as we can.
Yes, my question was about the homeowner associations, you know, say this subdivision, homeowners' associations, if someone doesn't pay their homeowner's association dues, and then they don't do what they're supposed to do, the best management, how does that work? Like, does the city have to enforce the homeowner, the, the HOA directly, and do the HOAs ever disband or not?
Yes, all the above bad scenarios. We, we've had a mixed experience with HOAs, some operate exactly as they were designed, and they stay vibrant, their residents stay engaged and involved, and they work well. We've got some others that have been disasters, and the city now shoulders some maintenance responsibilities that we really shouldn't have to. We're wanting to avoid that circumstance going forward as, as much as we can. And, and probably, it highlights the fact that even if we make this a citizen responsibility, ultimately, it can all fall back to the city.
Yeah, that's kind of what I keep coming through when I write it out, and, you know, go through a chart with it, that even if...
We still have an obligation to monitor these and enforce their upkeep.
Because it's going to fall back on us anyway if it's not done properly through the homeowner's association.
If it's not done correctly. So, we're not, even if we pick the property owner model to start with, the city's not out of this picture in any way. If we pick a hybrid version, we're not out of this picture in any way. Again, it's so easy to, to argue on, on behalf of either one of these points of view. But, but just keep in mind that, that the final responsibility for monitoring these and ensuring that they are maintained is the city's.
Mayor, there's, there's two points, I guess, that I've thought about significantly since the last meeting, and then number one is the financial consequence, I mean, if, if we put it over on the citizen responsibility, I think that's, I think that's more advantageous to the city financially. Otherwise, we're going to be picking up the tab for it, and if we don't have a mechanism to pay for it, then it's just going to come out of the general fund, like so many other things do. So, to me, there is, there's some financial benefit, of course, it could always still fall back on us, but I, I think that would be the case. And then number two, since it deals with new projects going forward, there does seem to be a level of fairness, that if that project has an issue with their stormwater, that not everybody is having to pay for and address that issue, that that particular development is taking care of their own problem. So, I mean, those are, those are two of the points, I mean, I've got some others that could probably go the other direction, but still, again, the biggest issue for me is the unknown, and like you said, it's, it is an issue that we can always readdress, we can always change the direction, change the course, change the ordinance, change what we need to do, if we do see that there's a problem, we will have some flexibility. So, that may be the direction I could be leaning at this moment, unless I hear something more compelling.
Well, I think going forward with the HOAs, if you sit down and you work with the verbiage that you're going to put in those.
Yeah.
And be more forceful about having those boards set up, and those filed, and done, would be very helpful in obtaining that mechanism to take care of that. I know that there's a couple that already do. Does that make sense?
We're talking about generally increasing the legitimacy of the HOA model, which has been in use for decades, but it has had no, it has had no legal mechanism for ensuring that it functions as it should, and that's really my idea of what we're talking about when we say changes to our ordinance. I don't, I don't ever envision a scenario where we're telling an HOA, we're, we're directly going and becoming the collection agency for a homeowner who doesn't pay their bill.
No.
We are ensuring that the, there are minimum standards for the HOA, and that they continue to exist, and that they meet those standards, and if they don't, providing the appropriate mechanism to make sure that it gets reinstated, or, you know, management reestablished, or what have you.
And in my mind, and I might be overthinking it, by going forward and doing it with an HOA, maybe having a code enforcement slash person underneath Kyle that would go around and inspect those, you know, that, that would be a way to make sure that they did it.
And I think, I think as we prepare, as you see our budget, you're going to see our anticipation of that, we, we've got to build that into our budget, or we will fail.
One of the challenges of the past with the HOAs, some of them have a, a management company that's involved, and, and sometimes they operate rather well, and then other times, I guess they're trying to self-govern them, their own operations, and, you know, things just fall through the cracks, changes take place, people move out of neighborhoods that were responsible for certain things, and things don't get passed down the way they should. So, I don't know, I don't know if there's a way to address that, you know, if, if they're going, you know, if we could require them to have a, a management company in place to, to help with the oversight, I, I can't imagine doing a development where I didn't have a management company involved, because they're, they're very cumbersome
Yeah.
and very complex, and there, there are a lot of legal issues involved with it.
I think you could, at the very least, you could establish minimum requirements for board members, to say that they must have the appropriate expertise to be able to run an HOA, but I'm, I'm with you, and, and even in a small-sized subdivision, you know, 30 houses, it's difficult to manage that day-to-day responsibility, to know the legal loopholes, or the legal pitfalls, I mean, and to be able to enforce what they need to enforce to be able to function. I, I agree, I don't, that's a conversation we'll, we'll absolutely have to have.
Would, would something regarding the HOA be wrapped up in the covenant's conditions and restriction of the neighborhood?
Absolutely. That's why it has to be part of the planning process, it has to be established from the moment the subdivision is envisioned, it has to be, that HOA has to be envisioned and, and set forth before there's even approval of the plat, of the subdivision.
You know, when that, will that time come, where we need to put some of this, some of the details together, it, it might not be a bad idea to get maybe the home builders involved, obviously, they're pretty closely...
I think Joe's going to be one of our key partners in this, and, and I, I do think realtors and, and home builders, and we need to make this work in the most practical way that we can, the complexities are so great that we're going to trip over them, if we don't have some buy-in on the front end. And again, what we're looking for tonight, we're not voting on an ordinance, we're simply, we would like a, we're not voting on a resolution, I would like to take a, take a vote, I'm not sure that it's a binding vote, some described it today as a straw vote, and I said, oh, no, no, I want them to vote, but I'm still thinking it may be a straw vote. What we want is a direction on which way to craft this ordinance, so we can bring it back to you on the 23rd, and start being as responsive as we can. I know everybody's uncomfortable, and everybody's got more questions than they have answers, if anyone's ready, I'd be glad to take a motion for one direction or the other, and if we get a second, we can continue the conversation until, until you've exhausted yourselves.
Well, let me, let me, let me throw this out, is there any, I mean, if, if we went, what's it called again, where the, the homeowners are responsible, what's that called?
The property owner model.
Property owner model. I mean, if there's someone that's opposed to that, I'd kind of like to hear their, their perspective and their opinion on that, because I, you know, that was, I was probably opposed to it a couple weeks ago when we first discussed it, more so, I don't want to say I was opposed to it, but I favored it, I favored, you know what I favored?
Yeah, we favor not dealing with it. Unfortunately, that's not our...
My hands have been tied here on this.
Yeah, so anyway, Karen, or anyone else?
You're staying quiet, I was roll call earlier.
So, Mayor, you just need somebody to make a motion, do the property home mob
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Thank you. Mr. Bradley with a second. Are there further comments or questions? Twice in one night, I'm going to roll call.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
No.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Undecided.
How you write that, how you write that one down?
I'm more undecided too, actually.
We just need a way to go, we can change it.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, and I am decided.
We just need to keep our place.
That's right, and that's it, the, the main thing about this, if this doesn't work, we can always change it down the road.
Is that correct, six to two?
Yes.
Six to undecided.
No, I think the undecided, I think the undecided just went to no.
Yeah, because I don't think it works any other way.
Do our, do our engineers from Strand have any editorial comment, or are we on a path that we've done what we need to do? Please do.
Going to change her mind.
That's why you go undecided.
That's why you go undecided.
No, there's just a couple of things that I just want the council to keep in mind as you're making this decision. One of the big things is the need to update companion documents with either option. There's going to be a need to update the stormwater manual, the subdivision regulations with planning and zoning, the HOA documents or governing documents in that regard that you were talking about before. And that's a strong need, especially with the property owner option, to get those updated, get maintenance guidance materials prepared for them, if they need checklists, new standards. That's just something to think about, that that's going to have to happen following this adoption of this ordinance. That's a key thing. Keeping it short, just one of the other things is, you elaborated on a couple of times, Ms. Tackett, I think someone else did, just the need for a more robust inspection and enforcement program. So, that definitely follows the property option as well. I mean, you kind of talked about a code enforcement under Kyle or, you know, there will be a need to inspect those to, you know, ensure the safe, safe and proper function of these facilities, but also, you know, avoid problems that could affect residents downstream, especially with major infrastructure facilities and that kind of thing. So, that's just another thing to be thinking about as you make a decision. And then, one of the last things is a lot of the ordinances for this program start with ensuring the public health, safety, and welfare. And so, that's a key thing. And so, just keeping in mind on how we're going to define parameters of public and private system and that's probably going to work into updating these documents and the ordinance and that kind of thing and just how that works with the city being responsible for bigger repairs or the property owner being responsible for those bigger repairs and how that reflects, how that relationship works with affecting other residents or affecting the municipal system as a whole. So, there's just some key things to think about.
Thank you. I think, I think council's very aware that with this decision tonight, we've only begun the work. So, and there are lots of steps that are going to have to be taken across the board. Pardon?
Scratchy, yeah.
We're going to have to eat this elephant one bite at a time. There's lots of, I mean, we're not going to be able to bring you back. Changes to this or this new ordinance, changes to subdivision regs, a whole new stormwater manual, all of that stuff necessarily in two weeks. But, yeah, come on. Especially with Kyle. He's on vacation next week.
That's right.
I heard that.
Yeah, really?
He thinks he is, right?
But we will at least have an ordinance that establishes the homeowner responsibility. We'll have to add in the other pieces, the HOA things, the stormwater design manual, getting that brought up to a much better standard and the subdivision reg stuff. It's going to take time, but we're going to be focused on it in the next coming months. Hopefully, we will be able to at least point to the EPA and say, "Look, we're not, we're taking this one step at a time." They won't come knocking on our door.
Sounds good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Massey, you've got some happy stuff tonight.
I'm so sick of looking at furniture, folks, I got to tell you. I've got municipal order for approving the purchase of furniture for the new police department from two different vendors. It's all state contract. I think it's a total of about $90,000. It is our, we're using our asset forfeiture. We had not spent a dime out of our asset forfeiture for about two years in order to save up for this kind of expense. And if you saw in your packet on the 28th, we put some pictures of our furniture in there where everything's down to the wood, there's no leather and, I mean, almost every piece is like that, so. But we are going to move what good furniture we have into the new building. But I'm proud to say that the most expensive furniture is the furniture that goes in the community room, which will be for the, obviously for the community, so.
And I was, just to add, I was delighted even before I became mayor to go to Frankfurt with the chief and his staff and visit Kentucky Correctional Industries, where they've saved a lot of money by using Kentucky Correctional Industries, where the prison inmates do some remarkable work. So, that's a part of the municipal orders, well.
So, is we doing both of them at the same time? Since you said your total amount?
Sure.
Was that for both of them, chief? The total amount for both A and B was 90?
Yes.
So, I presented it.
Seven and forty-five.
Yeah.
We can, whatever the council's wish is, if we could ask the clerk to read the first, then we'll decide if we want to approve it or do a second one.
An order approving the purchase of furniture for the new police department from KCI and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents, whereas the purchase of new furniture is necessary to outfit the new police department and whereas Kentucky Correctional Industries, KCI, holds state contract MA 758-1300000847 for custom and pre-constructed furniture. Therefore, competitive bidding is not necessary. And whereas funds are available in the drug asset forfeiture fund for such purchase and whereas upon subsequent council approval, a drug asset forfeiture fund may be reimbursed for remaining bond proceeds issued for the construction of the new police department if funds are available. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the purchase of furniture from KCI in the amount of $47,367, a quote for which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference is approved and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
I'll get behind that, make a motion. That's a positive, I'll get behind that.
Was that a motion? That was a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Conway, was quicker to the punch down there. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Now, let's buy the rest out.
An order approving the purchase of furniture for the new police department from System Design Incorporated and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents, whereas the purchase of new furniture is necessary to outfit the new police department and whereas System Design Incorporated is a furniture broker that uses state contracts for furniture vendor JSI MA 758-1100000657-5, Community MA 758-1100000658-8, and Null MA 758-13000012025. Therefore, competitive bidding is not necessary. And whereas quotes were obtained from System Design Incorporated and two other vendors for the Z-line shelving, as a state contract does not exist for such product and the cost of such product does not exceed the city's $10,000 minimum for competitive bidding. And whereas funds are available in the drug asset forfeiture fund for such purchase and whereas upon subsequent council approval, the drug asset forfeiture fund may be reimbursed for remaining bond proceeds issued for the construction of the new police department if funds are available. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the purchase of furniture from System Design Incorporated in the amount of $45,089.73, quotes for which are attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference is approved and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Ms. Erdley? Second, Ms. Tackett? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chief, you've got some furniture. Now, I'll tell you what the chief's been working on is we tried, he has tried to coordinate this so well so that the delivery can come straight to the police station and we don't have to haul it twice, we don't have to pay storage. So, this has been a timing dance that I hope it works for the chief.
There's monitors standing around.
Okay. We're at that part of our meeting where we have council comments. Mark?
I'm good.
You're good. Chuck?
Getting back to the cable thing, really not the residence cable thing. Talking about business internet, David brought it up earlier. That's something that we need in the city to bring business in.
Yes, we do.
And I have suffered some of this just this week in my own business. I realize that we are suffering in Georgetown when it comes to internet capacity for businesses. So, what I would like you to do in your conversations with charter, whoever you're talking to, is ask them, "What do we have to do to get better capacity for that?" Maybe call the Lexington to find out what they can to get better capacity. I know it's a bigger city and a bigger market, but we're really behind the curve on the internet capacity. We need to look at that.
I think you're right, sir. If we're going to be the city we intend to be, we've got to get that handled.
Businesses wanting to come here are going to require it. If we don't have that available, we might look somewhere else.
I'll bring the results of that conversation back to the council.
Mayor, can I just quickly say, I'm glad Chuck mentioned that. I didn't want to be the only one saying it. I know, I didn't want it to seem self-serving, but if it's impacted, Mr. Bradley, if it's impacting me, it's impacting a lot of other businesses in this community. And we've made a commitment to be business-friendly for everybody, try to draw more business out here. And we're doing a great job of that. It's obviously happening rather well, but we certainly need to continue to wave that flag.
Can I give an example of what happened?
I'd love to hear.
Just today, we went to the VoIP system on our phones and we were trying to work with AT&amp;T. Anybody know what it's like to talk to AT&amp;T on the phone and try to get something changed? So, what they did is they didn't do what we asked and moved our DSL to another number. So, when I got back and said, "Okay, we need, we do have cable internet also, but we wanted to have two sources of internet." Called them back and said, "Look, we need to get the cable, get DSL back." And they said, "We don't have any capacity on that line. You can't have it at your address." So, this is what we're facing in Georgetown. We have businesses, they're told, "You can't have internet."
Yeah, that's not an okay answer. Yeah, that's good anecdotal information. I'll use that. Anything else, Sharon? Connie?
Just today, when we had our chamber lunch and it was really good, and I look forward to moving forward and seeing what we're going to make happen. It's pretty exciting.
Thank you.
Just for Public Works, there's been a chair on the side of the road down around the Kmart area for four weeks now. It's been plowed up and broken up now, but it needs to be removed and it looks kind of bad.
I figured somebody would want that chair.
Not anymore.
Let's make a note and make sure that we.
Can we instruct Public Works, when they see something like that, stop picking it up?
There ought to be a standing, understanding.
The garbage bag down below your place.
They had a mattress outside my place for three months.
Yeah, for what's at his place, but what's on ours is really out on the state road, but they don't come through enough to see it, but.
They just don't pick it up either.
I think our goal needs to be to pick up everything. Not figure out what we don't pick up, just pick up everything.
Actually, in your state city address, you're cleaning up.
I think it's a top thing. I mean, you can stand back and watch people walk through a parking lot and see a piece of paper and how many people walked past it before a person had been down to pick it up. Or even in the foyer.
If it was the dollar, they'd pick it up, though.
Yeah. Or if it glitters, it might be a coin.
If it glittered, that's true. Anything else, Karen?
No, that's all. Thank you.
No one?
I'm good.
I had a question. Some people brought up about, you know, the road damage, you know, from the storm, potholes and stuff. Is that usually fixed around April, May, something like that? Some streets are, like Lemons Mills really bad.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to get worse.
It's going to get worse, I know, but I was just curious if there was like a ballpark.
I think it's as soon as we know whether we'll cooperate with us. And we're going to have, the severity of the snow and how much plowing was done, we've got streets that are wrecked.
It's like that in Lexington. I mean, it's horrible, so. I've just told people that. I mean, it's, you know, the cold, cold temperatures and the plowing and the, you know, but.
That's going to be a big job for us this spring.
Yeah, it is.
All right. Marvin?
No, sir.
David?
Mayor, good job today. You represented the city and yourself and the council extremely well.
Thank you.
Very encouraging.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else to come for the council, is there a motion for a adjournment? Motion!